Good evening. I'd like to open the Planning Board meeting for September 12th of the Oxford Planning Board 2022. Before we begin, I'd like to read a memo. "In addition to tonight's video recording by Oxford Cable Access pursuant to Massachusetts Open Meeting Law, any person may make an audio or video recording of this public meeting, or may transmit the meeting through any medium. Those making a recording must inform the chair." Is anybody planning on recording tonight? Excellent. "All attendees are therefore advised if such recordings or transmissions are being made, whether perceived or unperceived by those present, and are deemed acknowledged and permissible." So there. It being seven o'clock, we will turn the meeting over to the Vice Chair, Rich Scholz, for the plans not requiring subdivision approval.
Okay. We have one plan. The applicant, known as Henley Tully Family Trust 2016 and James H. Scott. The purpose of the A and R is to add additional land to the property located at 60 Mount Pleasant Street, as identified on assessors map parcel 51 parcel B11. The property is located in our one zoning district. Is anyone here representing this particular A and R? Doesn't look like there is.
Unfortunately.
Might be helpful.
Okay, well dated 8/22/2022. The applicant, Henley Tully Family Trust 2016, 60 Mount Pleasant Street, Oxford, Mass. The surveyor, New England Land Survey, Georgie Smith III. The property information is on assessors map 51 parcel B11 in the resident, our one district. Okay. I see several things wrong with this plan. Okay, number one, based upon the history of this A and R on 42 Mount Pleasant Street. The the width of the frontage, so-called frontage of the lot, was 50 feet back when the Planning Board signed it previously, and it now shrunk to 49.99 feet. I think that should be corrected. We shouldn't make anything any worse as far as the frontage goes, since it doesn't meet the district at this time anyway. I have no problem with the fact they want to add back land. I do have a problem with the shed that's drawn on the plan, crossing the the boundary line.
Yep.
And that's got to be, there's got to be some determination there, whether they put a note saying they're going to remove the shed or the shed disappears from the plan. I don't want to see a shed going on to the, but his property. So those are the two things I see. We also have a checklist that's absolutely blank. Now, we know it's not blank because they supplied this, okay? But it just shows me they didn't spend any time looking at all that stuff and making sure they had it all. So. That's what I see so far. Anyone else have any comments on it?
Rich, I have a comment. I agree with you on the shed, and typically you would say, you know, it's a shed, it's probably on concrete blocks, push it over, but it looks like it's a pretty good sized shed. So probably big enough to require a building permit if you wanted to build that.
Well, now is the time to fix it, in my opinion. Make a parcel C on the side that puts it back on their property.
It's on, it's on a line, a property line that when they, no matter what they do, if they try to go to sell whatever, there's going to be an issue. So now's the time to rectify and like I said, make another parcel.
So I know we're discussing this, but I don't want, I don't want to accept it and stop the clock running. I'd rather turn it back to the applicant.
Have him do it right, yeah.
Is that okay with you guys to do that? Because I just think there's too many questions here. There's more questions than answers at this point.
So do we need a motion to disapprove it? Is that what we do?
No, I don't want to disapprove it. I thought we just
Send it back to the applicant.
Say
Incomplete submission, yeah, incomplete, and Arizona plant, and Arizona.
Arizona plant.
When's our next meeting? Within 21 days?
The 26th.
The 26th, so.
When did they submit it?
Today.
Oh, today?
Well, it's dated 8/22.
So the board could vote, the board could vote not to not to
Yeah, we don't have to accept it.
Endorse, not to accept and not endorse, and have them come back.
If we don't, yeah, as long as we get to it again within 21 days, right?
Or they have to re-submit again.
Then it'll be constructively approved.
Even with the constructive approval, I'm hard pressed to think that registry would accept it. It clearly shows there's a violation.
Right. Registry doesn't look at zoning violations.
They don't care.
They only look at free notes and their lines.
Yeah, but we, right, we don't.
It's good.
So I discounted, and if today was the official date, and the 26th would be 15 days.
Oh, so we're good.
So I think there's probably sufficient time for us to get in touch with the surveyor.
All right.
Perfect.
Okay, let's do that. I don't, I don't want to, I don't want to sign nothing, okay? I don't like this plan as it is.
Yeah, it has to be changed.
So we're not going to approve it.
Yes, incomplete.
Make a, make a
I'll make a motion, we don't approve this A and R plan.
Till issues are resolved.
Till the issues on the plan are resolved.
Second.
Are there discussion? There being none?
I vote aye.
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 And I vote aye. Carrie, your name is. Thank you, Rich. Turn it back over to you.
Awesome. All right, next on the agenda is a public hearing for 6 New Street, special permit, application for an in-law apartment. So is anybody here from, come on up. Could you just come up and, actually, let me read the I think I have to read a little thing first, and then we'll introduce each other and go forward. "Pursuant to the provisions of the Oxford Zoning Bylaw, Chapter 3, Subsection 3.9 Apartments Accessory In-Law, the Planning Board will hold a public hearing on Monday, September 12th at 7:05 PM in the second floor meeting room of the Oxford Town Hall 325 Main Street, Oxford, Mass. On a special permit application submitted by John F. Holton to allow for the construction and occupancy of an addition for use as an in-law apartment attached to the existing single-family dwelling on the property located at 6 New Street, Oxford, Mass. In the R3 Residential Zoning District owned by Christine Smith. And shown on assessors map 34B parcel FO2, the application may be viewed at the Oxford Town Hall in the Oxford, in the office, excuse me, of the town clerk or the land management department. Anyone desiring to be heard on this matter should appear at the place, date, and time designated or submit written comments before the date of the hearing to the Planning Board at 325 Main Street, Oxford, Mass. 01540, or you can see masspublicnotices.org for legal notice." Okay, so if you could introduce yourselves, and then maybe give us a, like an overview of what you guys want to do.
I'm Christine Smith. I'm the homeowner, and this is John Holton. He's my contractor. He'd probably be better informed to give an overview.
Excellent.
We are looking to
Oh, can you just move that microphone closer?
Yeah, we are looking to add a small 17 and a half foot by 20 foot off the back of the garage, so the son can stay living at home with her and have his own separate space. And it's going to have a kitchen and a half bath and a full bath upstairs. But it's a small addition, and we've had it surveyed, and he designed it to fit exactly in the same references to the boundary lines, the property lines that it is now. And everything clears with the distance to the current septic, and the septic has a Title V on it, and the current septic's set up for three bedrooms, and their house is only a two-bedroom now, so we wouldn't be
So it's only 340 square foot addition, that's all you're putting on, 17 by 20?
Yeah.
That's it? And you're going to get a bedroom out of that, and?
It's a two-story.
So it's double.
So it's double.
Well, we're going to, we're going to utilize the garage as the living room part of his.
Okay.
One-car garage.
It's going to go back.
Yeah, it's going to be the garage, his downstairs will just be a little kitchenette. The garage would be the living room, and there'd just be a little bedroom upstairs.
Okay, okay, so you're using, using the existing garage and the existing stuff as other?
Yeah, I'm not going anywhere and peed anything off.
Have you already run it by the Board of Health, so they're all set?
Yes.
Okay.
I have no problem.
Any, any, oh, any comment from the, straight to the board first, any, any comments?
Just make sure there's enough parking.
Parking.
Yeah, they checked that out, there's enough.
Yes, there is. We've got parking on both sides.
Did we get it, is there a site plan?
How many cars, five, how many cars?
You've got a plot plan that shows you, you're leaning the driveway.
As you're looking at my property, there's two parking on the left-hand side, and at least four actually on the right-hand side.
Okay, all right, all right, okay, yeah. Yeah, you can, you have enough to put.
Yeah.
It's not like a one-car driveway or a two-car driveway.
That's what he's putting on it. Where's the driveway? Yeah, I don't know.
Where is the?
We're just, I'm just curious about the driveway.
Okay.
We don't see it on any of the detailed drawings.
So you said the addition is off the back of the garage.
Yes.
But is it, is it a one-car garage?
Yes, it's a one-car existing garage.
But yeah, I'm assuming you have a driver going into the garage.
Yep, there's a driveway on the right side, and there's a
We do.
A driveway on the left side also. It's, the street is close to the house, so on the left side there's parking for at least, at least two cars.
Okay.
And on the right, yes, two on each side easily.
You have, you have, you have two on the left side and the driveway.
Yeah, and the driveway on the right, so.
The driveway side only looks like there's one, one for one car.
No, we just want to make sure you have enough to pack, so you don't pack on the street. That's all.
Plenty.
So basically, the only
That's true. I mean, but
Right, you've got to know for sure.
And we got to know.
And the only additional new space is 340 square feet. It's 17 by 20. Everything else is already existing there.
Yes.
Okay, any other comments from the board? Anybody in the audience here for this project would like to make a comment, anything? No? Okay, Tony, anything from you? Okay, I guess we're
I don't, I don't have a point in front of me, but yeah, I'll make a motion, we approve this, I'm sorry. I'll make a motion, we close the public hearing.
All right, motion by Jeff.
Second.
Seconded by Roger. Any more discussion? Call for the vote. I vote aye.
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 Carried unanimously. Jeff?
I make a motion, we approve this special permit for an in-law apartment at 6 New Street. I don't have a date on it.
Is there a date on, yeah, what is the date on that?
That is
Give the date.
Should be able to read.
On the plan.
It's on here. It says
No, 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 that's the actual date. That's the actual, the date of the plan that was
Oh, August 6th.
Date is August 6th, 2021.
2021?
21, okay.
Okay, seconded.
Seconded by Matt. Any more discussion? Alloferal call for the vote. I vote aye.
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 Carried unanimously. Good luck.
Good luck.
Thank you.
Do we have the decision?
This is the action video.
Wait to check stuff on.
Okay. It being 7:15, we're right on track today. Excellent. We have a public hearing for 36 Sullivan Boulevard, special permit for an in-law apartment. Is anybody here for them? Come on up.
Grab a liquor chair.
Sure.
No, only two chairs per table.
Oh, no, he's sitting here. He's not getting out of this. He's staying right here.
He must be the builder.
How'd you know?
Let me just read this, and then we'll
Sure.
You guys know the, all right, "Pursuant to the provisions of the Oxford Zoning Bylaw, Chapter 3, Subsection 3.9 Apartments Accessory In-Law, the Planning Board will hold a public hearing on Monday, September 12th, 7:15 in the second floor meeting room of the Oxford Town Hall 325 Main Street, Oxford, Mass. Regarding a special permit application submitted by Carrie and Nathaniel Stone to allow for the construction and occupancy of an in-law apartment within the existing single-family dwelling on property located at 36 Sullivan Boulevard, Oxford, Mass. Assessors map 48 parcel C04 in the R2 Residential District. The property is owned by Carrie and Nathaniel, am I saying Nathaniel right? That's higher.
Yep.
Nathaniel Stone. "The application may be viewed at the Oxford Town Hall in the Oxford, in the office of the town clerk or the land management department. Anyone desiring to be heard on the matter should appear at the public, at the place, date, and time designated or submit written comments before the date of the hearing to the Planning Board of 325 Main Street, Oxford, Mass. 01540. See masspublicnotices.org for legal notices." All right, so if you guys could introduce yourself, and let us, and whoever, let us know what you guys were planning on doing.
I'm Carrie Stones. My husband Nate.
Excellent.
And this is Kevin Barnes, our contractor.
Kevin Barnes, yep, Barnes Building and Remodeling. I guess I'll explain it. We're basically, they have an existing finished basement area that we're looking to expand. We're going to gut the existing space just to improve on the construction of it, and then expand to allow room for a kitchenette. There's an existing bathroom on the, in the basement area that's going to get renovated, and, you know, they'll be adding a bedroom in the existing basement area as well.
Okay.
So you're doing nothing to, you're not increasing any of the footage of print work of the house whatsoever?
The footprint is not changing, no additions.
What about parking?
We have five acres. And it's for my disabled mom who doesn't drive.
Good luck plowing that.
Yeah, it's decent.
Plenty of parking.
You can shovel that.
Has enough egresses and everything?
It's a walkout, so there's already several windows, a couple double-hung windows at Meade Grass, we're adding another window in the living area, and there's a patio door.
And what's, what's the septic rated for? How many bedrooms for?
It's, yeah.
I assume in the process, you have to run that by them anyway, just to make sure.
We've already talked to them. There's a bedroom on the first floor. It's kind of out of the way. It's very small. She uses that as an office, but there's going to be a deed restriction that they're taking care of to make sure that the number of bedrooms isn't increased.
That's what you got to do.
Swapping a small bedroom for a large bedroom.
Awesome, right, right.
Yeah, so we've talked
Calling an office now and
Exactly.
Awesome. I don't have any questions. Anybody from the board?
I don't have any.
Anybody from the audience like to comment? Nope.
No.
Tony, you all set?
All set.
Yeah, all right.
I have to, I'll make the motion to close the public hearing.
I'll second that.
Motion made by, made by Rich, seconded by Jeff to close the public hearing. Call for the vote. I vote aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oh, wait, does anybody have any more discussion they want to talk about that? Okay. Jeff?
No.
All set. All set, so I'll make a motion that we allow the special permit for the in-law apartment within the dwelling as specified on their drawing. I don't know if there's a date on that drawing.
A date on, you have a date on?
I think there is on there. I don't remember it.
And the drawings, these dates are tough.
Yeah, prayer of me reading that.
I have a small set, but I can't read without my reading glasses.
When, when did you do it? Were you doing it in, when did, when did you do the plan?
It was August.
August of this year?
Yeah.
So, so
Okay, August of
August.
August 2022.
22.
Sorry.
Let all the deed restrictions go with that special permit.
Yeah. Mary will take you, the actual date.
All right, any more discussion?
Second, is there a second?
Motion by Rich.
I'll second it, sorry.
Seconded by Jeff. Any more discussion? Call for the vote. I vote aye.
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 Carried unanimously. Good luck to you guys.
Thanks, guys. Thank you.
In this winter, we'll have a shovel. We've been a bunch of new shovels for you guys.
Any one of you a chiropractor also?
Okay.
All right. We're a little early, but, oh, no, we're not.
You can do the minutes if you want, or you can do
No, no, we're right on time, I'm sorry.
Oh, yeah.
It being 7:20, we have a continued public hearing for 23 Lovett Road, Stormwater Management and Land Disturbance Permit. I assume you guys are here for that?
Yes, sir.
So, Tony, you want to bring us up to speed?
We sent the
Oh, wait.
Sure, so, so we received comments from Graves Engineering, peer review comments. The applicant submitted revised plans late last week. Today, we received the final okay from Graves. They've reviewed everything, as well as we have reviewed it. Everything's in good order, and so recommendation would be, if there's no further comments or concerns, to approve as, as modified with the changes that they incorporated in their revised plan.
Okay. Does anybody need to see the plan or anything? Sounds like all the issues have been resolved.
I'm assuming that they took care of the line of sight issue.
Yes.
Yes.
We'll take care of it anyway when you do it.
Yeah, well, we intend to live there, so we intend to take care of it. But he did, he did denote it down at the bottom of the driveway that the grade needs to be brought down to street level.
And again, I'm assuming that's all on your property anyways, on either side.
Yeah, it is on the shoulder of either side of the driveway, so.
If you do too much work down in the street, though, you might want to think about just giving a heads-up to the highway department.
Mm-hmm. About, about bringing it down.
In case it's like a drainage structure or something, are they worried about, whatever.
Yeah, what? I don't know, the way it is there, the, the shoulder on, on our side of the property is about maybe like two or three feet higher than the road is. So it's really
It just looks like overgrowth that nobody has attacked.
Yeah.
It's only going to affect you guys and all your contractors and everything else going in.
Pulling it out of there, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, any more discussion?
No, I think that
I apologize, because didn't we talk about dragging this out till the end of October? That we have to do it so quick, but we'll
Jeez, crap.
I'm sorry, that was
Making me nervous.
I know it was a big discussion, remember that?
Yeah, yeah.
October, whatever it was.
Yeah.
Okay.
I'll, I'll make a motion, we close the public hearing.
All right, motion by Jeff.
And I'll second.
Seconded by Rich to close the public hearing. Any discussion? Call for the vote. I vote aye.
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 Carried unanimously.
And I make a motion, we approve this application for stormwater management and land disturbance at 23 Lovett Road dated
What's the date on that revised plan? Didn't say it right there. September.
Plans are correspondence board dated September 9th.
Dated
Plans
Here it is, revised
September 9th.
Dated
Revised through September 9th.
Revised through September 9th, 2022.
All right, motion by Jeff.
Jeff, I'll second.
Seconded by Rich. Any discussion? Call for the vote. I vote aye.
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 Carried unanimously. Good luck.
Thank you very much.
Move on to an action item review and approval of minutes for August 22nd, 2022.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, the only change I made since emailing it out to the members on Friday was the, just a slight change to the header and added the meeting document section at the end.
I like the bigger font.
I always liked it.
You got one to sign in there? Did you give him one to sign?
It should be a copy.
Be signed file? Triple file, right?
No, I know it says to be signed. I know it's right, oh, of course. I was looking for to be signed, Rich.
Okay, for signature.
Sorry.
Okay, just so you have it so you can sign it, but I
Okay, any discussion for the minutes?
No.
I entertain a motion, we approve the minutes of August 22nd, 2022.
Motion by Rich, seconded by Roger. One more time, any more discussion? Call for the vote. I vote aye.
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 Carried unanimously. Do I sign it, Mary, or do you?
You sign.
You sign. You sign, Mr. Chair.
Just looking for the Oh, right.
Just, just the button, yeah.
No old business, definitely no new business. Sir, are you here for some?
No.
Okay, just You just here for the show?
Such a show, too.
It has been quite the show with these dates.
Let's move on to, we have exciting tonight as others sometimes.
Episode six.
That very end, you're
Submissions.
Submissions.
I said that, sixth one in two weeks.
Okay, we have a new submission for 10 Cypress Street, application for special permit for an in-law apartment. The applicant is JFC Pros Construction. The property owner is Norman Balco. "The purpose of the petition is to construct an addition to an existing residential house for an in-law apartment. Property is in R3 Residential Zoning District, as identified as Assessors Map 33E Parcel K04." Is everything, Tony, is everything submitted per regulation?
Everything's been submitted.
In order?
Yes, yes.
Anything unusual about this one or not?
It's a traditional addition. Certainly, the, you know, the board's going to
The size of the addition.
Want to look at the size of the addition and so on.
The addition could be just as big as the house in this respect.
I don't want to give it away. But that's, that's what you probably saw when you reviewed the packet. The, as the board knows, it is a special print, so we'd have to advertise, and with the holiday in October, the next date would be the 24th of October. So to, to set it up for that, do you believe we have something already for October 24th?
October 24th, the only thing I have on here is continued public hearing for the front driveway, Fairwood Street.
At 7:05.
At 7:05.
Yeah, so if the board wishes to schedule it for 7:10?
7:10.
October 24th.
And the motion to accept this submission and schedule a public hearing for the special permit on October 24th at 7:10.
I'll second that. Motion by Rich, seconded by Jeff. Any discussion? There being none, I'll call for the vote. I vote aye.
Aye.
Vote aye.
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 Carried unanimously. All right, the other submission is, I believe it's the big one, the new Cumbes down in South Oxford, right?
Correct.
And I assume we don't have to get all the way into it, but any discussion you want to throw out there on it?
Sure, so this is for 235 Main Street and 5 Fairlawn Avenue. It's an application for site plan It's an application for site plan review. The applicant is Cumberland Farms. The property owner is 233 Main Street LLC, VSH Realty, also known as Cumberland Farms. The applicant is seeking to combine two parcels of land, that's 235 Main Street and 5 Fairlawn Avenue. They're proposing to raise all structures, redevelop both parcels as one development site with new gas pumps, a new convenience store, associated parking, landscaping, and other site amenities. It's located in the Village Business District and is identified on the Assessors Map 33E Parcel P01 and Parcel P14. The applicant will also be going before the ZBA for a special permit and a variance as well and anticipate that to take place in the month of October. This has also, we've started to review internally, recommend that on behalf of this board, that it go out to peer review for two things, both the traffic study and for stormwater, to review the stormwater report. We'll note that they did not submit a land disturbance or stormwater application at this time, but we will review it with DPW to ensure that if it does require an application, that they will have to submit one. At this stage, it's simply a site plan review. Doesn't require the formality of notice as special permit. We could certainly schedule this for, given that it's only a site plan review, at this stage, we could schedule it for the next meeting, September 26th at 7:30, which would be after R2 zoning articles.
It's September 26th at what?
7:30.
I'm just... I just have concerns about why they're going to the ZBA?
They're going to the ZBA for a special permit and for one or two variances, as I recall.
Several.
Several.
Is it worth us pursuing their site plan if they don't get everything they need?
Yeah.
I'm sure they've...
If we wait to hear from them, yeah, if we wait to hear.
Designed into that.
Yeah.
Those changes to the...
So we discussed... We discussed that with the applicant. They are comfortable with proceeding with site plan review. If the board wishes, they are comfortable proceeding the end of this month.
I'd like to extend it out to at least the ZBA, at least here's the case, and when they get it... When's the ZBA gonna hear?
I don't have it scheduled yet. I'm looking to schedule it for October 6th.
6th, okay.
They need a special permit to alter or extend or expand their pre-existing non-conforming because the gas station is no longer allowed in the Village Business Zoning District.
Yeah, that's what I was...
So they need a special permit to alter or expand their pre-existing non-conforming. They need several variances for signage and for parking within the front yard setback and for landscape coverage within the front yard setback area.
Okay. Okay, that's why I was interested, to find out what kind of variances they need. Those look like they're all pretty straightforward. I don't see any issues with it.
They are, and the attention would be if we were to do the special... If we were to do a site plan review, certainly whatever would be crafted in conditions, you know, would have to be honored by the applicant. And any changes that, if ZBA were to make changes, then they would certainly have to come back, modify the plan. They are in... And it's their issue, but they are in a due diligence period with the property owner, so there's some timelines they're working through as well.
So, I have a question, Tony. You mentioned they wanna combine two lots, right?
Correct.
So... I... The old Honey Farm, or Sunnyside Farms, it used to be Telef, that was on its own parcel, I assume?
Thought.
Right, that was a separate ownership?
Yeah.
And then the building in back, the old lobster restaurant, whatever it was called, is that on a separate parcel too?
No, it's on the same parcel as the...
So Cumbies owned all that?
So it sort of does a... It was separate owners, but it does sort of a L shape around the back.
They don't own the L.
You'll see it right on the plan.
The Sunny Farms.
That's where Ralph had problems with it.
With the Jersey barriers, yeah, separated by Jersey barriers.
The Sunny Farms and the restaurant are one parcel.
Oh, oh, okay.
Lobster, one.
Cornman's was.
Yeah, that was over in the corner, yeah.
There's a plot plan in there.
Yeah.
There's a plot plan in there.
See what you're doing there. Just wanted to make sure.
It's surveyed, yeah.
No, I have a feeling we can accept this and we can schedule it on our agenda, but it's gonna take weeks for peer reviews and traffic studies and all that too, right?
Absolutely, and the applicant's well aware of that too.
So, if you... We can put it anywhere we got a hole, I guess, and just continue it.
You think it's realistic that we'll be able to discuss anything at the next meeting?
Yes.
I think the applicant, I'm sorry.
No, go ahead.
Can at least make a presentation.
Make the presentation, just like he did with tech review. I mean, this thing already came through tech review with the town, so at least most boards had a say in what was going on.
Does it say what kind of building they're gonna put in?
Yes, yes. Oh, there's renderings in there as well.
It's your... It's the typical super Cumbies building.
No, Tony made him build a... He's gonna make them build a nice one.
I got stuck...
That's what he promised.
Cause this first one is the existing... I got stuck on this, the first one is the existing, what it is there now. And I'm like, well, this is a match-up with it.
I think there's a picture. There are pictures in there.
Yes, there was a colored renderings provided to... At least via email.
We did say we wanted it to look colonial.
Yeah.
Not the big flashy lime green.
No palm trees, nothing like that.
No, no palm trees, nothing like that.
They might as well do, get a two-for-one deal here and get...
And they're not doing like an outside area, right? Like an outside eating area?
So there's some green space there, but it will be a comment that staff will provide.
Cause they have one in... I've been to the one in Milford. They have a nice outside chairs, you can go have a hot dog and relax.
Auburn as well.
Yeah, yeah, it's nice, yeah. Yeah, I like that.
And I see they're putting a pizza parlor in.
That's correct.
Oh, it's gone?
Perfect to go with the other pizza parlor across the street that they're gonna put in.
Can have enough pizza.
See which one comes in first.
Well, which one's better? Alright, so, anybody wanna make a motion?
Yeah, I'd make a motion that we accept this submission and not require a public hearing of any sort, since it's going through, you know, ZBA. And it's going through all boards as we speak, as after today anyway, again. So I entertain, we accept this submission and schedule it on our agenda for either 26th of September.
I'll second it.
At 6:30, 7:30.
7:30. Whenever. After whatever's on there.
I like whenever. I like whenever better.
So...
It was seconded by Matt.
Seconded, okay.
Motion by Rich, seconded by Matt. Any more discussion? Roger or anything?
Nothing.
Alright. Call for the vote, I vote aye.
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 Aye. Carried unanimously. Thank you.
As long as they fix the parking lot there, I'm good.
Huh?
As long as they fix the parking lot.
It's gonna be totally right. That whole site's gonna be ripped up.
We lost a tire over the winter in there.
I guess, I mean, obviously, when they move those gas pumps and stuff like that, that's gonna be...
And they gotta fix that... That... The phone booth, right? Cause I went to use it the other day. You know, and trying to put your coin in and it's flat with the... No, it's no good.
That's a relic.
The last living phone booth in Oxford.
That's a relic.
It's just sideways right now.
Can we get a historical plaque on it?
I wonder who's gonna go through that fixing job.
That's like, do you guys know... Do you know where the photo mat is?
Yep.
Still one of those in Auburn.
So you're not on here, Tony, for any report?
It's on the backside.
On the back of it.
On the backside. But in a nutshell...
Tony's just calling me out tonight.
I have, other than to remind the board, as you know, we'll have the public hearing on the two articles for the warrant at the next meeting. I'll have a presentation. We also did receive the communication from the AG's office with respect to our four articles from May, two of which have already been approved. And the two were the change in the R3 along Route 20 to incorporate, to add GB in that area. And the second one was the... The lot of lesser... Or the zoning district of lesser size to apply by special permit. And those two were approved, pretty straightforward. We've actually received, already received the updated zoning map, so that will be updated online shortly, very shortly. The other two, they requested additional 90 days to review. The board may recall, we went through this with the solar bylaw. And that, at the end of 90 days, I think prior, or just under that window, was approved. So would hope for the same outcome. And the other two were the marijuana overlay district and battery energy storage. Did inform the battery energy storage applicant too of this situation. And, you know, we'll follow it closely, so as soon as we get a communication from the AG, whether they approve it or not, or whatever recommendations they... Comments, I should say, they provide, I'll certainly share with the board as soon as I get them.
Excellent.
But that's a very good update, I would say, at this stage.
Okay. Anything else?
That's all.
One quick, random question. How many of the in-law apartment things we did tonight, would we not... Would we not have had to do if, when our bylaw goes through?
Sure, so the one that would have applied would have been the 36 Sullivan Boulevard. The project with the addition, 6 New Street, would still have to go through the process. Similarly, the submission, tonight's submission, 10 Cypress, would also have to go through the process as well. I think in the last two years, I'll have to go back and double-check this, but we've had more than a handful of the in-laws where just solely interior. So you're looking at, you know, sometimes two, three months of time.